Thank you. And I know it's not on the agenda, but I got contacted that we were have to do the proclamation for Constitution Week. So even though they're not here, whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Peter Weiss, Mayor of the City of Oceanside, on behalf of the entire city council do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week and urge our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, issued this ninth day of September, 2020. And this will be presented to the ladies tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. Council met in closed session to discuss items 2A and B and item 3 on the agenda. There was no meeting on item 1. Item 2 is conference with real property negotiator involving two parcels of land, both owned by the Oceanside Unified School District, 3131 Oceanside Boulevard and 333 Garrison Street, under negotiations or price and terms for the potential acquisition of the real property. Item 2B, conference with real property negotiator involving the city-owned parking lot number 35 located at the southeast corner of Pierview Way and Tremont, under negotiations or price and terms for the potential sale of the property. There is no action to report under the Brown Act on item 2A and B. Item 3, conference with real, I'm sorry, conference with the city attorney over existing litigation involving the matter of Susan Behr versus City of Oceanside. Again, there's no action under the Brown Act to report at this time.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our consent calendar, which are items 5 through 26. Mr. Navarro, do we have any requests?
Item number 18 has been pulled by the public.
Okay. I'll move approval of the balance.
I'd like to pull item number 12.
So we have a motion and a second on the balance. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item 12, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. This is amendment number 4 to property exchange agreement with Ivy Ranch Development Company, LLC, for the exchange of property at El Corazon. This has to do, this is actually requesting that the city approve amendment number 4 for an additional amount of $173,000, 173,5,519, for a revised contract amount of 1.8, 1.9 million dollars for improvements. And this basically has to do with improvements to the entrance to El Corazon, the park. I had a lot of concerns about, about those improvements and the way they were presented. I think there was a lot of concerns from the community as well. I'd like to enter my no vote on this one. Thank you.
I'll move approval of item 12. We have a motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
Item 18, Mr. Navarro.
Under item number 18, the city clerk's office received two comments against item number 18, and they both have to be read into the record. Our first comment is from Diane Wolke. Because it is for sale doesn't mean it has been deemed safe. Stop buying into the hype. Greater than 62K for plastic mesh sales. Plastic yarns are formed from pellets that contain PFAS to prevent the yarns from sticking to each other. In addition to the many toxic and carcinogenic chemicals in plastics, flame retardants such as those recently listed on the Prop 65 list and being banned in California are added. PFAS is a class of over 5K forever chemicals that damage health and the environment. They are also in jet fuel and firefighting foam. Airports, large and small, are filing lawsuits for PFAS contamination and resulting cancers and environmental contamination. The skate park is adjacent to the airport in the pesticide-laden Zephyr Development Land. It is very near the San Luis Rey River in the high-risk fire area. The glossy websites that advertise these sales provide no specific information about wind forces they can sustain. My patio cover had to be engineered to sustain 81 mile-per-hour winds to meet city code. Now the code is 83 mile-per-hour winds. Where will these plastics end up in strong winds? What will happen as they deteriorate with UV and other environmental exposure? Where will those microplastics end up? Ultimately, in the fish dinner you eat. The off-gassing of methane and ethylene from plastics, as with plastic grass sports carpet, is also flying in the face of our climate action plan. Plant canopy trees. Spend the rest of the money to test the pour-in-place playground mats for lead in the crumb tires they are made from. Other cities have already shown they test positive. There is no safe lead level. Clean the existing plastic playground structure kids are already climbing all over in this pandemic. And that is 2 minutes. Our next public comment on item number 18 is from Cindy Davenport. Honorable mayor and council members, regarding agenda item 18, spending such a considerable amount of money for shade will allow for consideration of installing solar shade structures instead. This would pay for itself with the energy produced and would contribute to the implementation of our climate action plan. The proposed shades also seem to be made of harmful chemicals which could shed and be harmful when disposed of. Please always look at ways to benefit our city's revenues and residents with renewable energy. Now is the time. Thank you. Cindy Davenport, Oceanside resident since 2008. And that concludes the public comment on item number 18.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I'd like to make a motion to move approval, and I would like to commend staff on responding to local constituent complaints on both the bathrooms, which is an item that we're going to be working on, and we're going to work with the developer, the Zephyr Project, to help significantly enhance and bring improvements to this park. And this is a heavily, heavily used facility by our community, a lot of kids. I spoke with one constituent who his daughter is preparing for a future Olympics, and she uses this skate park in preparation for that. Very impressed. We need these shade sales. I am so happy we moved on this, and so I'd like to push this forward. And I would just like to, you know, ask staff or put, put a, plant a seed, you know, if there's any way we can improve the restroom facilities and/or provide, you know, hand washing stations. Just, we have, we have a lot of kids that use this park, and I would love to see more resources for our community that we're here to serve and put those tax dollars to good use. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. So the comments from the public have to do with materials and not with the actual shade. And I think that some of the points that they brought up were good points. So whether it be a shade by, say, trees, or maybe even take advantage of creating solar power covering would be phenomenal, especially there. We've always talked about lighting there. So yeah, it is a highly-used and well-known skate park that unfortunately, the bathroom seemed to be a place that when kids from other parts of, outside of Oceanside come and start tagging up the bathrooms, it's hard to, you know, hard to keep up with that. So, but yeah, I'm going to go ahead and, well, first of all, I'm going to ask that staff reconsider the material. Otherwise, I'm just going to go ahead and vote no, because I do think that we could have done a better job. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. I'll second the vote. I would, before we go too heavy on what we're going to do to the park, I think it would behoove us to understand what the repairs that have been done for year after year after year in that park and the, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't give all the credit for that, the destruction to people outside of the City of Oceanside. I think this is, this is one park that sits by itself, and it doesn't have a lot of supervision capability like the MLK Skate Park and North River Road Park. So I, I just hope that you'll do that when, before we go too far into making this the perfect place.
So I do have a question for staff. If, in fact, rather than just a shade structure, we did some type of solar panel and added lights, would that make that skate park available for skating up until, say, 10 or 11 o'clock at night?
Honorable mayor, Nathan Mertz, Public Works Division Manager. You'd have to have, I believe, an induction system to store power to utilize the solar at night. Otherwise, it'd be best just to hook up to SD Genie for sports lighting.
Perfect. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
We'll go to our first general, item 27, which is adoption of a resolution certifying and approving the appointment of Jeff Hart as an hourly extra help consulting assistant.
Honorable mayor, councilmembers Kyle Coger, Public Works Director. Prior to Mr. Hart's retirement as fleet supervisor in July 2020, a recruitment to fill his position was conducted, but we were unable to hire a qualified candidate. We have since restarted the recruitment process and now hope to fill this position within a couple of months. In the interim, Mr. Hart is qualified to help supervise the Fleet Maintenance Division and assist with day-to-day operations, as well as help complete a few projects that are currently in progress. Additionally, utilizing Mr. Hart's experience would ensure that there is no lapse in service to other city departments, especially police and fire, which rely heavily on the division to maintain their respective vehicle fleets. California statutory law states that a retired person shall not be eligible to be employed by the city in which he or she served for a period of 180 days unless certain conditions are met. Those conditions require the employer to certify the nature of employment, and that employment is necessary to fill a critically needed position and to ensure that the employee meets the bona fide separation and service requirement as specified under Government Code, Section 21, 200.5. Accordingly, staff is asking the city council to approve the hiring of Mr. Hart prior to the exhaustion of the 180-day waiting period. That's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Go to item 28, which is the presentation of Housing Division Affordable Housing Strategy and direction to staff for a potential RFP.
Good evening, Honorable mayor, city councilmembers. Megan Crooks, interim director, Neighborhood Services Department. I'm here to present to you a housing strategy for consideration to set priority areas for responses from a request for proposal, notice of available funding process to ensue in the next few weeks. Staff recommends that the city council receive the presentation of the housing strategy and direct staff to issue requests for proposals or notice of available funding for the implementation of the priority areas. On January 22nd, 2020, the city council provided some direction to bring back staff's recommendations and analysis on use of inclusionary funds for homeownership program for low and moderate income households, as well as revisions to Chapter 14(c), the inclusionary housing and lieu funds. Since approximately November, the Housing Division has received numerous inquiries regarding affordable housing projects and potential to partner with various developers and service providers for housing services. On March 18th, 2020, staff had prepared and planned for a homeless workshop, and due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we had to postpone that workshop. During that time, staff was also prepared to present to the city council on March 25th an affordable housing development for consideration. And although the project wasn't approved at that time, council provided direction for staff to seek out whether inclusionary and lieu funds could potentially be utilized towards homeless sheltering, being that that was a high need. And on May 11th, since we couldn't hold our homeless workshop, homelessness memo was provided to the city council, and that offered up information regarding the inclusion, use of inclusionary and lieu funds, which can be utilized toward acquisition or construction activities, but is not recommended to be utilized for operational costs or sheltering purposes. And then on August 12th, staff brought this item forward to the Housing Commission, and the Housing Commission recommended the city council accept the report and authorize staff to issue RFPs and notice of funding available. But they also, in their motion, requested that no more than $500,000 of inclusionary fees be utilized towards sheltering, or sheltering purposes. As staff, also at that time, council had given us some direction to prepare for this RFP process and allow projects to come together forward for recommendations. So staff decided to put some areas of focus together and determine the priority areas based on the types of programs we currently have in our Housing Division and the types of funding available that would allow for us to fund any potential projects or services. The areas we focused on, and we categorized them by income levels on housing security. Homelessness was one category, both unsheltered and sheltered. Extremely low-income households, very low-income households, the low-income households, and then moderate-income households. And that's how I will present this to you this evening. With the homeless category, and we're talking about chronically homeless individuals, the point in time count for 2020 provided us with data that we have 242 unsheltered homeless individuals in the City of Oceanside. And then we also have 166 sheltered transitionally through regional shelters, but the place of origin to those homeless individuals is City of Oceanside. That also includes our Women's Resource Center, Family Recovery Center, anywhere that we are sheltering homeless individuals, as well as shelters in Escondido and Carlsbad and Currently, what we have in place, our Oceanside referral system for homeless, our OPD HOT team, and that's the homeless outreach team, they provide contacts to homeless, chronically homeless on the street, and they have many, many, many contacts trying to offer services. Once a homeless person finally decides they want to enter that system, they do enter care coordination, and that might involve going to some type of drug rehabilitation, alcohol intervention, domestic violence support, or they can be referred directly to the Housing Authority as well. At that time, with the Housing Authority, and we work with somebody, and if they are willing to develop a housing plan, which means that they're going to take steps forward to become permanently housed, they will then go into our bridge program. So we will provide them apartment dwelling, or right now, we also have expanded into motel rooms and through our motel voucher program. And we work with them through a period of 90 days, and they have 90 days. If they are making progress, we will occasionally extend that if they are, have a due diligence of moving forward. But we only have one case in the past year where they have not succeeded within the 90 days, and that person was offered multiple extensions. Once they get through their housing plan, which includes finding a rental unit, working toward applying for any resources that they are entitled to, whether it be social security income or other types of incomes that they may be able to help sustain themselves, we get them into a rental unit, usually utilizing a housing program voucher as well. And then we try to provide supportive care coordination while they're housed. So we want to ensure that they remain housed once they're there, and they may still need that type of supportive care. So we have veterans who are on the VA voucher program, and the VA provides that coordinated care. We have families who are reunified, and so the Child Protective Services is going to help provide that coordinated care. So we have different agencies throughout the county that assist through this process. Some of them, we do not have to fund directly. Others, if we want to expand our programs or do more, we will need to fund them through some of these resources, and that would be included in the RFP and NOFA package. Issues that the homeless face are mental health, domestic violence, various addictions, affordability. So we have some homeless who might be living in a car or just places that are not meant for habitation, so they just can't get into a rental unit. And then we have split-family situations as well. And homeless require care coordination. Solutions for this is continuing HOT teams, providing reunification programs. That's one of our first steps. We try to contact family members, and if they're willing, reunify them with their family members and provide them transportation to get home. Temporary shelters, bridge housing, the Housing Authority vouchers, care coordination, which would be social workers or other types of coordination that we can fund as well, and then permanent supportive housing ultimately. For extremely low-income households, and these would typically be the individuals who we find on our housing voucher programs. Currently, we have five, over 5,000 on our waitlist who cannot get a voucher so far. And of the 5,000, we have 982 that have disabilities. We have 719 that are over 62 years old, and then over 2,600 of our waitlisted are families. The, what they need are affordable housing units. So either they need a voucher or they need affordable housing units. Issues that they tend to need to overcome or that they're in the situation of are overcrowded home environments, living in places not meant for human habitation again. They may be in temporary housing, so they may be either couch surfing with family members or friends, or they may be in motel rooms. And the ongoing increasing rents are an issue that they face. Solutions for this are our prevention and intervention programs. We do have those, and so far this year, actually just since the spring, with our program with Community Resource Center, we've referred 35 individuals or families, 12 of them getting prevention services and 11 getting intervention services. Unfortunately, 11 did not qualify for the program based on other services they were probably already receiving. But we do coordinate with them, and if they don't qualify for one service, we refer them to another. We also have other solutions, such as senior housing programs, permanent support, job training, and childcare. Those types of programs, supporting those would provide them assistance to be able to afford their housing situation and be able to direct their funding that way. Very low-income households, this makes up a percentage of our housing choice vouchers as well as our affordable housing units. And issues they face are the continued increasing rents and the waitlist that they're waiting on for housing choice vouchers. They do have a risk of homelessness. While it's not as severe as the extremely low-income individuals, it's still there, and they face issues with affordability. They have disabilities and split families. They may be receiving incomes for those things, but those incomes are so low that they still can't make up the balance to what they need in those increasing rents. Solutions for this, again, are prevention and intervention programs, care coordination, more social workers, and an increase in vouchers. And we do take those increases. Whenever they're offered, we apply for them, and they do come with funding from HUD. Home sharing programs, that's an option that we'd like to explore, particularly for seniors. I know Vista and San Marcos have recently put something out together, and we'd like to do the same as part of this RFP process, and then senior communities. Low-income households, again, similar issues that we have here, affordable housing units and housing choice vouchers, although they, they don't always qualify if their incomes are just above the margin. Issues they face is the waitlist and the increasing rents. Homeownership is out of reach, and they have need for childcare, affordable childcare, and local jobs. It's a choice of whether you pay for childcare and commute time or not take the job at all. So they run into those choices and may choose to stay home with family rather than take the position. So if we have the connection or be able to provide the childcare so they can move on to the job, then that can be a solution. Solutions, again, prevention and intervention, affordable housing options, rent restrictions, and homeownership programs. And then we have our moderate-income households. They are in the rental market and mid-range housing. Their issues are that the majority of their income may be spent on rent, their homeownership is out of reach, and again, the childcare, local jobs, commutes, and wages. Solutions would be homeownership programs, moderate-income housing options as well. Through our analysis, the priority areas, we, everything is a priority. Everybody needs housing. And affordability, as we know, not just here in Oceanside or San Diego or California, is extremely high, and we broke it into two areas. The area one are the most, have the most insecurity for housing. And then priority area two, while it's still a priority, they do have more stable housing. So that's why they are separated into priority area two. So the priority area one that we found was the homelessness and the extremely low-income households. Priority area two would hit the very low to low and the low to moderate income households. And those would be two areas that would have to be responded to in the RFP or notice of available funding. Again, staff recommends that the city council receive the presentation and direct staff to issue a request for proposal, notice of available funding for the implementation of those priority areas. And I'm available for any.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I'm surprised there's no public. I think there is a large part of our community that is interested and would have attended the homeless workshop. I still have hope that we will have, hold that workshop, perhaps at the same time that we're doing this, because it would be nice to work together with the community. I know they're, because we haven't been able to step up, we're, you know, people in the community have stepped up, and it's definitely something.
So the priority area one that we found was the homelessness and the extremely low income in households. Priority area two would hit the very low to low and the low to moderate income households. And those would be two areas that would have to be responded to in the RFP or Notice of Available Funding. Again, staff recommends that the city council receive the presentation and direct staff to issue a request for proposal notice of available funding for the implementation of those priority areas. And I'm available for any.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I'm surprised there's no public. I think there is a large part of our community that is interested and would have attended the homeless workshop. I still have hope that we will have hold that workshop, perhaps at the same time that we're doing this because it would be nice to work in together with the community. I know they're because we haven't been able to step up. We're, you know, people in the community have stepped up and it's definitely something. I'm thinking of Vanessa, I'm thinking of, you know, the different the different organizations that are out there. So I would like to see that workshop actually happen. Hopefully, we're seeing a vaccine coming along sometime fairly soon and we'll be able to do that. So the extremely low is the low-low, which the new category, right? The yeah. So is 5,000 on the waitlist? Is that about the five-year mark? Was it the five or eight-year?
Eight-year.
Eight-year, yeah. Eight-year waiting. We definitely need to do a shelter and hopefully we'll be having some property coming up, property acquisition that will help us make that happen. I would like to see the day centers. I think you called it something else that would be a place where our homeless, for example, would be able to go and have a few, you know, be able to take care of a few things, including getting getting resources, referrals, perhaps even having showers, you know, a shower facility, maybe some wash facilities. And I'm thinking more than more than just one. I think that, you know, I've heard so many stories that like, for example, Brother Benno's, they have showers, but by the time they get back, they're just as sweaty as they were when they first went over. So if we if we can start really addressing some of these things and moving people, and it's going to take time. And it's but but I feel that our community really wants to see this happen, really wants to see the investment now. And so I would really like to see that. So I don't know if you need a motion. It sounds like we want you're asking the council to accept, give direction and that a direction to include going forward on this. So do we need an actual motion? Yes. I'll go ahead and make that motion. And I would like to see, like I said, this this idea of a day center. I think staff, you were calling it something else?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Academy or something?
City Council. I'm not sure what term you're looking for. We are calling care coordination, all the service, any possible service.
Yeah, I was thinking of a facility though.
But the facility, we do tend to schedule the care coordinated services at one place so you can get multiple services at one location.
Right.
And also have.
So you're thinking in terms of a building, not just?
Both.
Some kind of infrastructure, yes.
It can be services that reach out and then it can also be a service that goes into a building.
I think that's what we need. We need to get people to come in because what ends up happening with shelters is that's where you go at a certain time towards the evening and that's where you leave a certain time in the morning. And then you have folks that are out that could be receiving services and could be moving maybe a little maybe a little faster through the through, you know, as we as we progress in being able to have shelter shelter positions and hopefully building affordable housing. So it would be that day center. I think I was really excited about that, that notion.
What would be the primary funding source for the priorities on this RFP and direction?
Councilmember Rodriguez, Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have several funding sources that we would identify in the Notice of Funding Available. And they are eligible for various functions, whether it's acquisition or development or service oriented. So we have our BLHA funds, which are the local housing affordability funds. And that's based off of a $75 per transaction of real estate. And that we will get annually and we're estimated in the first year about approximately $650,000. It's hard to project what every year will be because this will be the first year, but it could be upwards of the 600,000 range. Our home funds, which are coming in approximately 600 to 650,000 dollars a year. We have heap funds that help provide services from the county and that's 150 to 200,000 dollars a year. We have our inclusionary and lieu fees and currently we have a balance of approximately $8 million. And then we also have our CDC low mod fund that has approximately $1.2 million as balance and that would be one-time funding. It's remaining funds. So we have some ongoing funds. There's also different legislations that we were watching pre-COVID that we were hoping would come through to offer new homeless grant programs. But we'll see where those turn out after the COVID pandemic flushes out. So we do have hope for new funding for homelessness. And then we have, we're part of the Continuum of Care with San Diego County and we can also request funds through that as well. So I imagine that developers or service providers may also pitch that we could ask for something from there as well.
Okay. Thank you very much for that response. The need is great. You know, there's a waiting list right now of, you said, over 5,000 of our residents that are struggling and we need the affordable units. But yet, over the last two decades as a city, through our policies, we've barely been able to push back past 500, 600 affordable units in creation. And when we look at the exuberant cost of creating an affordable unit, we greatly rely on the private sector in our partnership with them. And I think as a city, we are making great ground on our policy changes through our affordable house or inclusionary housing changes. We are updating our ancient general plan to allow for more certainty for the development community and clear pathways in the creation of affordable units. So I believe that over the next three to six years, as we update our general plan and we identify corridors that are close to transit and we open up more opportunity for the private sector, we are going to have a, you know, affordable unit building galore. I know if I'm still sitting here, that's something I'm going to require and I'm really going to put pressure on the private sector to build as a part of building in our city. And so with that being said, there is no short-term solution for affordable units. There isn't. That's the reality. That's the fact. We can talk about it all day long. It sounds great, but we're not building an affordable unit in the next 12 months if we start today. That's not how it works. We're 36 months away potentially or more from from being there. And so when I talk to constituents on the street and the number one concern and complaint I have, it has to do with homelessness. And if we're dealing with inclusionary housing fees from the development community, we have a lot of flexibility of what we can do with that money in the identification of a property. I know myself and Deputy Mayor Jack Feller moved on a motion to give staff direction to help with, you know, putting this together as well as identifying a homeless shelter. And I agree with Councilwoman Sanchez's, you know, identification. We need a homeless shelter. But more than that, more than the location, we need a pathway to success. And as a city, we're not equipped to manage or run or operate a homeless shelter, nor do we want to facilitate housing homeless forever. We want to create a pathway that begins with government dependency but ends with self-dependency. How we get there? We need brilliant minds to come together to figure that out because we're spending tax dollars, we're spending in lieu fees. And so the direction I would encourage my colleagues to move in and I would like to move staff on is to focus on a homeless shelter that has a component that transitions individuals off the street and on a pathway to be self-dependent, not dependent on government anymore. There are a smaller percentage of individuals that are disabled, that are mentally ill, outside of drug use, that will always depend on government. And that's the way it is. And we're going to take care of them. But there is a large demographic of homeless individuals who have not experienced the full potential that they have been given by God for their life to live out their life. And we, as a city, when we're spending tax dollars, putting them in a hotel, we've experienced that, extension, 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 right back on the street. What did we accomplish other than blankets, burritos and shelter temporarily? We really need to work hard to identify success as starting on government dependency, but moving on a pathway off of government dependency back into society. And being back into society is where we can say, that was successful, not just putting them under a roof for an unknown amount of time and not knowing where that ends. So what am I getting at? I would like us to focus heavily on the shelter component, partnering with our public safety, partnering with the social workers and the experts and work on a unique program similar to what they're doing in El Cajon, where they start out on that pathway, whether it's 300 days, 500 days, and they move through an intermediary plan, a commitment to work, to be drug-free and to eventually be into a situation where they're paying partial rent and then eventually back into society, taking care of their family, being the best they can be. And that's what I would like to see us as a city do and not just cast a wide net and not be focused. We have limited funding and we have to be focused if we're gonna solve homelessness here in Oceanside. Thank you.
So May, and I don't disagree with anything that Councilman Rodriguez said, but it appears to me that what he just said fits into your priority area one category, which would be the temporary sheltering, building to permanent housing option. So I believe the RFP would have that as a priority that you would then, if that's someone brings that in as a proposal, they would meet that requirement and we'd be able to evaluate. And adventure is going to come back to us again anyway at some point.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, that's correct. Yes, we will have that built into the proposal.
So my only issue with what was in the staff report is that the Housing Commission recommended that no more than 500,000 of city money be made available. I would do not want to do that. The amount of city money for the right project to me is irrelevant at this point.
Agreed.
We need to get the right project at the right time to advance this as quickly as possible. And if that means using other sources of money and more than the 500,000, I'm willing to do that. So Councilmember Kine?
You know, obviously, the homeless crisis is one of our biggest challenges we face. I think I do have one concern. I mean, going forward, that is what I think about most. I think it's going to be our biggest challenge or we have most creative with. But I'm worried that, you know, our very low income that are out there working, they're not visible, but they need help are going to be overlooked at some point because the homeless crisis is so visible. And I just want to make sure that you have someone who's, you know, raised in Oceanside, has paid taxes here their whole life and they need help too. I just want to make sure we're there and we don't overlook it because of how much attention the homeless crisis gets. And it needs, I mean, the homeless crisis needs that attention, but I think there are some groups that that need it just as much. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. And the homeless is the highest priority that we have right now. I mean, we have the North County Homeless Task Force and this is, you know, our city has also committed to sheltering half the unsheltered within a very short period of time. We, you know, for whatever reason, in the past, we've not been able to build a shelter other than the Women's Resource Center, which is really for domestic violence. This is a time that we we need to do this. This has to be the thing that we focus on to have. We usually get people to other cities and we pay for that to have positions filled that are Oceanside in like Encinitas and Escondido and things like that. But we do have to build a shelter. We do have to have the supportive services. It's an age-old problem that every single city and every single housing specialist, especially affordable housing specialist, is dealing with. It's difficult to move, once you build affordable housing, how do you get people to move on even with supportive services, even with referrals for jobs? This is not a new thing. This is something that has been a problem from day one. So whatever we do, we have to address ours, which by the way, the the point in time count, it was an undercount, obviously an undercount. Yeah, it's good that we can use that, but we really have to go beyond that, those numbers, because this problem is real. We see it every day. And again, I feel that our community wants to partner with us, wants to help and support these investments for our community. And these are Oceanside homeless folks, folks that come from other parts of the state or country. Definitely family reunification is something that we really push hard. But we are talking about Oceanside homeless and we are talking about ensuring that whatever, you know, whatever stage and I've had conversations with homeless. When I was in law school, I met some homeless who were, I mean, really living the high life and then something happened and they lost everything. So we do have some folks who would be able to make it. I don't think it's a high number, but certainly that, you know, cream of the crop, cream of the top. Yes, let's let's help those. But we do have, we have to deal with a really, really hard hard part as well. That includes mental health services and that includes mental health, housing, housing for our mentally ill, which is going to have to be distributed throughout the county. Because, you know, these places have been disappearing over the over over time. So we definitely need to do that as well. But I think the motion was basically to, there was a motion that staff is that I made, the staff was recommending, I haven't heard a second yet, but basically it's all of this, but with priority with the homeless.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
So you had 242 actual homeless, 156 that are in transition, if you will. Was that the, were those the right numbers?
Deputy Mayor Feller and City Council, yes. That was the count that came out of the point in time count in 2020. So that's the ones they counted. We do register higher numbers with our HOT team. So we're not 100% sure in the accuracy of it, but those are the numbers as a region and through our continuum of care that we are targeting. And if we can make a dent in that number, we're making a dent in a bigger number too. So we aren't with any of these funds or programs going to resolve it 100%. So the idea is to keep taking the steps forward.
The the thought crossed my mind is, can we actually approach everyone that is homeless? I mean, some some people, how many out of that group does the HOT team think are unapproachable, don't want help, stay out of my life?
Deputy Mayor Feller and City Council, I can't answer specifically for them, but what we understand from our meetings and they took me out and talked to me about the different areas, they it takes multiple attempts for any one of them. It could, somebody may take 10, somebody may take 30 and somebody may never be reachable. Through this COVID pandemic, we saw an increase in those wanting to take the assistance. And that's why our, I mean, we've been doubling up on our programs and we've been processing as many as we can and we did permanently house 50. So we worked really heavily on that because it was an opportunity and we took it. But it just takes time. And eventually you build trust, you build rapport and they'll eventually come around to receive some level of service. But not all of them are going to want to, you know, take that step forward.
So in my estimation, the last thing that most of these homeless and low-income people that were really struggling with, that really need the help in regarding the homeless side of this, the last thing they need is is government to be managing them. I think what we probably need is that partner that whether it's Bread of Life, San Diego Rescue Mission, Solutions for Change, they are making a difference in in those people's lives and turning everything around for them. And they have success stories to do it. We just need to figure out how to make that work along with, I think, probably trying to figure out how to get the money to to get the the land or the shelter. I mean, I know that the rest I mean, I know that the Rescue Mission is willing to build a building if they can just find the land and take the effort. So I support the Priority Area 1 as well. That's what's being covered to start, and I think the community wants us to fix this, but it takes people that actually do this to make it work. So I think that's what we need to look for.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
So, staff's looking for direction. This is a lot right here. So I know you're looking for direction, but what I'm hearing in the motion is, I don't agree with Councilmember Kime. I think that there is a huge need there, but again, we're limited in resource, so I really wanna lean toward, let's focus. And what I think, what I'm gauging, and the dais can correct me, is we really wanna focus on Priority 1 as a top, top priority, because there's a lot of mechanics going on behind the scene with Priority 2 and our general plan update that we're gonna really be able to mitigate for a lot of that. So let's focus on Priority 1 and dealing with the homeless dynamic, and I think we're all on the same page, you know, of, you know, the 500,000, you know, I appreciate the recommendation from the Planning Commission, but I just, I don't really wanna limit that. I really want staff to approach this with an open mind and see what they need to do, and not really limit them to funding, knowing that we have multiple funding sources, and obviously, it's gonna have to come back before us, so if we can't pay for it, we're not gonna approve it, but if we can, and we can be creative, let's do it. So I think the motion, the direction I would like to give in the motion, I'd like to give is, is direction to staff to really focus on Priority 1, and particularly, a homeless shelter, and the dynamics surrounding the services and resources needed to facilitate that for the City of Oceanside.
Mr. Navarro, was, did Councilmember Sanchez make that similar motion, I take it?
Basically, yeah.
Councilmember Sanchez's motion is to accept the report and provide direction to staff, which would be the staff recommendation.
Well, there is no staff recommendation.
Right, so it's direction, so.
Direction to staff on the issuance of the RFP for the implementation of the priority areas.
So my motion is the only focus on Priority Area 1, because we're limited on, we can't cast a wide net on this.
Sanchez?
Yeah, actually, there are periodic grants that are available for affordable housing, and if this is not a wider net, then staff would have to come back to us and waste time, and some of these timetables are very short. So I think it's important to say, yes, this is a priority. I mean, that's what we've been working on, even without the direction that we're having here. We've been talking about the shelter, and we've been talking about that. At the same time, we're talking about this acquisition that we're in the middle of. So, but I think we need to have the whole thing to allow staff to have that kind of flexibility and say, okay, here's a great opportunity. It happens, and it happens rather quickly, and, you know, it could be for veterans, it could be for seniors, it could, so I really feel that it, you know, yes, let's say that that's a priority, because that's what we've been working on for several months now, but let's cast this larger net. We already know that that's the highest priority, and then the next one is affordable housing, and then, you know, being able to be homeowners, that's probably the lower priority, because we have to deal with this 5,000, you know, waitlist of people who needing housing, which includes the homeless. Did you wanna say something, Megan?
If I may, I just wanna clarify for the public's sake also that we still have our regular programs going, and we will still have specific grants that come through. We have prevention intervention programs. There will be funding that comes through that's specific, and we don't have a choice, and we will continue through that, so we will always continue our efforts of preventing people from becoming homeless. And this is just specific to this particular RFP, so it doesn't mean that we're limiting all of our programming down to this. We will still continue to offer the full gamut of programming.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, again, I think staff is looking for direction. There is a lot going on here, ladies and gentlemen. We need to give staff direction on what the priority is within this spectrum, and homelessness, this top box that's high, you know, staff only has so many hours a day, so much resources, they're not gonna stop accepting grants, somebody's gonna write a check, staff's gonna say, here's who you make it payable to. But we need to give staff direction on the RFP and where they're focused, because time is money, and our resources are limited. And so the motion I wanna make is specific to the homeless. This is where we need to focus. All of us on this dais are running for office, and the number-one issue in our city is homelessness. So we have limited resources financially and staff hours. Can we give them the motion to focus specifically on homelessness? Again, that's not gonna prevent them from doing everything else they always do. They just need direction with respect to the RFPs and the energy they spend. That's my motion, is to focus specifically on the homeless dynamic from this council agenda item.
So Councilmember Sanchez had made a motion, is there a second to that motion? Seeing none, that that motion dies for lack of a second. So Councilmember Rodriguez, your motion is to give direction to focus on Priority Area 1, is that the way you have it?
Correct.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second to give direction to staff, which I'm sure they understand is very clear, correct? Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1, Kime, no.
With that, we will, I guess, take a two-minute break and come back with our 6 o'clock public hearing item.
Maybe it's four.
Yes, sir.
Public.
Public applicant and staff.
The same. I had the applicant, applicant's representative, and some emails that we've received in the last couple of days. This was supposed to be presented by Mr. Greenbrower. Is he?
He's one of the...
Honorable Mayor, we have a little COVID growth.
Oh, okay.
So hopefully we'll get back to normal soon.
You're up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor Feller, distinguished council members. I'm here before you this evening with a project that you saw back in May of 2020. So it is a revision to the Sunset Mixed Use Project. It consists of a development plan and a conditional use permit. I'll make the presentation very brief as the modifications were subsequent to the approval. The applicant did purchase, acquire the two properties to the north, so they're taking over the entire block of that area for the Sunsets project. And the recommendation would be for approval to add a total of 118 dwelling units and 2,000 square feet of commercial space. A little background for the public in viewing this evening. Previously, there were three parcels. Now it's five parcels, a total of .7 acres in size. Ranges from Peer View on the south, Civic Center on the north, along the Horn Street frontage. D3 zone and is intermixed with a bunch of commercial, high density residential to the north and civic to the west. The illustrative that I show is what was approved back in May of 2020. Six stories, 76 apartments, 1,500 square feet of commercial, and three parking levels to establish the parking for the site. Like I said, subsequent, the applicant came in, acquired the two properties, and now we have a total of 118 apartments, 2,000 square feet of commercial. There are some amenity areas that read as pedestrian-oriented commercial space on the western portions of Civic, as well as Peer View, and those have potential for a commercial in the future, but at this time, they're amenities for the residents of the project. A quick overview of the comparison chart. I already alluded to it several times in the presentation, so I'll just bypass this. But we'll focus on the parking. Additional 107 spaces of parking have been provided to accommodate the additional 42 units and additional commercial space, as well as 46 additional biking or bicycle parking spaces to allow for alternative transportation. As before, the general plan policies for the redevelopment plan, the housing element, and the land use element are all consistent with the modification to the project to enhance the block, and staff recommends approval of the project. I did bring forward the parking scenario for you, just to refresh the memory, that it is a transit-oriented type development within .4 miles of the Transit Center, so adding another consideration as far as public transit and the ability to just not drive cars or bicycles, but to use mass transit as well. Getting into the zoning, the development standards are approved with the mixed-use development plan. As part of that, they have to bring forward high-quality design. So as I've shown in the illustrative here are the photo. Vegetated green wall along the rear alley will be provided by the applicant, as well as varied setbacks along all elevations, and then the commercial storefront glazing on all elevations on the east, north, and south portions of the project. That commercial storefront glazing will make it pedestrian-oriented and energize the streetscape for that area. I also wanted to bring forward the photovoltaic concept that the applicant is proposing as part of this project. It is a solar strut, solar wall cladding system that's integrated into the architecture. So this is a new cutting-edge technology that he's bringing forward to hopefully see 100% of their energy costs absorbed through the implementation of these types of photovoltaic cells, as well as rooftop solar. So I look forward to seeing something like this actually come to fruition and cover the cost of energy. With that, staff recommends approval of the resolution for the development plan, the conditional use permit, to allow the demolition of the two existing homes, which have already been photo documented, and creation of the six-story vertical mixed-use building. And I make myself available for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Do we have an applicant's presentation?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Weiss and council members. This is Ann Gunter of the Lightfoot Planning Group, representing the project applicant and owner. I am registered under the city's lobby regulations. Following your recent approval of the Sunsets project, the applicant was able to acquire two adjacent lots, providing an opportunity to develop this full block along Horn Street. As staff has outlined, the expanded building is retaining the same modern design with sustainable features, including extensive solar production. The project will extend the streetscape improvements around to Civic Center Drive, including activated uses at the ground floor. The building height and number of stories are the same. Six stories with a step down toward the west to follow the slope between Horn and the alley. The roof deck has been re-centered on the overall building and pulled back from the alley. The expanded building will add 41 housing units, and the expanded footprint allows for 106 more parking spaces. This will increase the overall parking ratio above what is required by zoning for the residents and visitors. There are also now three designated spaces in the garage available for employees, along with expanded bicycle parking and storage. As a reminder, the original presentation included a context study highlighting other downtown buildings of similar size and height. I'm not going to repeat those details, but have included one of those slides for reference. This overhead view, looking at the alley side of the building, shows where the lower parking levels will have green wall plantings to soften the appearance of the building walls along this side. The photos show how similar green wall installation look as the plantings grow in. We appreciate your review of this revision to the Sunsets project. The expansion to include the added lots will allow for a cohesive transformation of the entire urban infill block with this striking modern design, providing more residential units, along with activated spaces and enhanced streetscape, all of which contribute to the ongoing transformation of Oceanside's downtown. Thank you for your attention, and we ask for your support of the revised Sunsets project. Howard Jacobs and I are both available, should you have questions.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, we have public.
Yes, we do. On item number 32, the city clerk's office received four comments, one for, two against, one with no position, and the following individuals wish to have their comments read into the record. Our first comment is from Scott Ashton on behalf of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. Dear Mayor Weiss and council members, earlier this year, the chamber expressed its support of the Sunset LP's Sunset's Mixed Use Project in downtown Oceanside. As an expanded version of the project is coming up on the September 9, 2020 council agenda, I am writing again on behalf of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce to reiterate our support. Part of the chamber's housing creation policy platform is to support growth in transit-friendly areas, which also supports the goals of the city's climate action plan. The Sunsets project will be located approximately .5 miles from the NCTD Transit Center, allowing for easy access to a variety of public transit options. The Sunsets project will contribute to Oceanside's housing stock with 118 much-needed market rate units in our downtown area. These residential units will provide critical support to our downtown businesses that will need every possible advantage in the coming years to recover from the COVID-19 crisis. This project represents a prime example of the type of infill development that our community members have been asking for. We ask that the council support the recommendations of city staff and the downtown advisory committee, and we look forward to your approval of this important project. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Scott Ashton, CEO, Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. Our next comment is from Joe Hill. My name is Joe Hill, a 20-year resident of Oceanside. Mr. Mayor and city council members, this project is an add-on to the six-story May 20 monstrosity that the council approved without normal public comment and the ability to do so. The public is concerned that this council and our city are not allowing two policies. One, Housing Policy 1.16. The city shall strive to maintain a reasonable balance between rental and ownership housing opportunities, between senior and family housing. Who guarantees that for this project? The staff report says that this project is contributing 118 new market rate rent dwelling units to the city's existing housing stock. So much for being affordable. Two, Land Use Element 1.12, Policy B. The use of land should not create negative visual impacts to surrounding land uses. Look where it is located, and it is six stories, which is almost as tall as the hotels going up at the pier. Obviously, the council does not care. Now that everyone on this council is running for office in November, and since everyone has signed the Code of Ethics, why would any of you engage in quid pro quo transactions with this developer? A wild guess would be that it's all about the influence. It is not a secret that Mr. Howard Jacobs, the developer, has a history of developing projects which become high-end or vacation rentals. To be entered into the public record, political denations from Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Feller has taken 10,500. Mr. Rodriguez has taken 10,250. Mr. Weiss has taken 2,500. The voters need to see and know the lack of ethics shown by these council members with their council votes tonight. The next comment is from Diane Wolke. The explosion in the number of units previously approved for this project is another example of how developers are the tail wagging the dog. This stick-and-pack STRV development already posed traffic concerns for a highly congested area. Adding the proposed number of units will further compound this issue and create even larger safety concerns for students, parents, residents, and visitors around Oceanside High School. Stop the special interest money that is allowing you to turn a blind eye to the long-term vision for a city we want to remain in. Your short-term benefit today will become our urban blight in the future. Vote no on item 32. Our final public comment on this item is from Roger and Cindy Davenport. We request that no natural gas be connected to the proposed building. There are many reasons for this. Gas lines pose a danger for fires and explosions, especially in earthquake-prone areas such as ours. They also leak methane, which is a fire danger, and potent greenhouse gas. All-electric construction is less costly than mixed utility construction due to complete elimination of natural gas connections, meters, pipes, and equipment. The use of electrical systems for heating and cooling and for hot water production is more efficient and eliminates all onsite emissions. This cannot be accomplished with any use of natural gas. Heat pump water heaters are many times more efficient than conventional electric-resistant water heaters, and any added cost pays back within a few months. If electric power is supplied from solar PV arrays, as proposed and which we strongly support, there will be no onsite or net offsite emissions resulting from operation of the building. Reversible heat pumps supplying both heating and cooling are ideal for our climate and for dealing with the temperature increases we are already seeing due to global climate changes. Although air conditioning has not been needed in much of Oceanside in the past, it is rapidly becoming a necessity to achieve comfort in our homes. Electric cooking results in better indoor air quality due to elimination of exhaust gases such as CO and CO2. Elimination of open flames also reduces fire dangers. Modern induction stoves are just as controllable and quick to react as our gas stoves. They also include safety features such as time to turn off and automatic shut-off if a pan is not detected. Structures we build now will be used for, will be in use for many decades. We need to build for the future, and as they said in the 1950s, "The home of the future is an all-electric home." Thank you for your consideration. Roger and Cindy Davenport, Oceanside, California. And that concludes the public comment on this item.
We'll close the public input portion. Come back to the council. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Very excited to see this project come back before us. It's actually a blessing that they were able to expand and take up the remaining portion of that section of the alley. Much, much-needed infill development to help feed the growing businesses and restaurants in downtown. And I'm excited to get this property approved and pushed through. And so I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendations and approve this project.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Question. I read the staff report, and all it says it's going to comply with affordable housing, onsite or offsite. Are any of these units affordable housing?
Honorable Councilmember Sanchez, the applicant has not proposed any onsite affordability. He has made the statement that he would be paying the impact fees for future development of affordable housing.
And staff did not require that he have onsite affordable units, right?
That is correct.
Thank you. You know, my biggest issue with this, besides the small units, was the visual. It looked like a wall before, and now it looks even worse because now it's extending the entire block. So architecturally, I thought it was really bad. The fact that it has no affordable housing onsite, when, you know, we've bent over backwards for them, we should have required onsite. The size of the units, 600 and 875 square foot, with no storage, with one and a half parking spots, and no storage. Well, these are vacation rentals. I mean, every single one of these is going to be turned into a vacation rental, and that really sucks in my mind because we need to provide housing, and we're not requiring any of that with this. Walkability, it is imposing. I mean, it's right. You have no wide sidewalks, so you're walking right next to this, you know, six-story high building. It's just not a good feeling. I mean, look what we did with Mission. I felt that that was something that we wanted to show. This is walkability. No public amenities, no whatsoever. So I, I mean, this was a prime piece of property, and I wish that we had had better, higher standards. I mean, if this had been proposed in Carlsbad, you know it would be not even going to the council. So I have to say, I can't vote for it. I can't support it again. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. Could I ask the applicant about the use of timeshares in this place? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Mr. Feller.
I'd like to know if that has any of your intentions at this post.
I really appreciate you asking me that question, and I'll try to be as brief as I can, but I've sat patiently and listened to people make blatant misstatements using my name. I have never built a timeshare. I have never built a beach rental. There is no intention with this to be a beach rental. I did some projects in Santa Monica 20 years ago that were furnished apartments. That's the closest thing I've ever done to that. The vast majority of my developments have been regular, long-term rentals for families or working people. Yes, they are market rate. The units that Councilmember Sanchez mentioned that have no storage, that's absolutely not correct. And anybody who looked at the plans and really wanted to look at the plans would see that there are over 100, I believe, storage units, large ones, the size of mini-storage walk-in units, so that there's enough storage for all of the residents. There's just so much mischaracterization that it's frustrating. So there is no intention at this time to do anything related to vacation or beach rentals, but like any property owner, we reserve the right to follow whatever the law is that everybody else follows. Thank you.
Thank you. The, I think you have one, two, and three-bedroom assortment of apartments. This is a feeder for that struggling shopping center across the street. This is transit-oriented development. It's a block from the bus that will take you right to the Transit Center. It's a block that'll take you inland as far as you want to go on the bus. It's a walking distance to all of downtown. And I'm sorry to say this out loud, but it's green. This is green building. And even I can buy into that. We are required to build units to accommodate housing for the next 10 years. 5,443 we have with this project's, when this project's approved, this brings the units down to 5,325. So we just have a little bit more to go, but we should be able to get there. We can't, we're on another level. We're refusing housing in open space, and then now we're saying we should be developing in these transit-oriented corridors. And this is transit-oriented development. It's green, and we can't refuse to build anywhere. There's just too much of a demand for housing. So this is a pretty easy second. You know, I grew up in the building and construction industry, and I love to see buildings being built. And we have a core downtown that this was, is part of that initial core. And if it was such a valuable piece of property, why didn't somebody do this 25 years ago? Anyway, I second the motion.
Councilmember Kim.
As we go forward with planning and land use, I am concerned with some of the legislation that's coming out of Sacramento. Every year, there's new bills that are mandating zoning, and whether it's near transit, it's clear where that direction's going. I write letters advocating against many of those bills. I think that planning should be left to us. And as we do those, I think it's important to realize where we're going to build. And I think by putting a development like this in the downtown area next to other buildings of the similar height allows us to keep the character of other neighborhoods. So if we could put this here and add units in this spot, which already has tall buildings and dense residential, then we can keep different neighborhoods like South Oceanside and keep their character. And I think if we're going to do a building like this, this is the spot to do it. With the small units, I also think that is a better fit for entry-level, someone just coming out of college, entering the workforce. It's, it'll help that. I mean, that's public policy 101. It's by, you know, adding residents to a part of the city. It makes it safer, makes much less, you know, blight and crime. You have 24/7 people who will call the police, do neighborhood watches. It'll, it'll bring up the area, the shopping center around it. So I think it's a bonus for that area. I think it would fit other places in the city. No, I don't, but I think it's appropriate for the location. I think there is a demographic where the size of those units will appreciate it and the cost. So I'm in support of the project right now.
Mr. Greenbrow, I have a question for you. In looking at the notice for the project, I don't see any requests for variance or variations.
Honorable Mayor Weiss, that is correct. There's no request for variations or variances as you create the development standards through the mixed-use plan.
So this project is consistent with the general plan and zoning for that area?
Yes, that's correct.
I thought so. Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Last question. Gas is being, you know, allowed in this unit, correct? It's not going to be an all-electrical unit? All-electrical units?
Councilmember Rodriguez, I'll let the applicant speak to that, but my understanding is that it will have all the natural, or the natural gas as well, but a majority of the cost will be incurred through the use of photovoltaic.
Howard, you guys are going to have gas stoves in these units, right?
No, Councilmember Rodriguez and Mr. Greenbrower. Actually, the, now, things like that can also be addressed at building department level if that's something you want to change. But at the moment, the plans happen to be almost exactly what those folks wrote about. The building is currently designed as an all-electric building because that is consistent with the city and the state's efforts to reduce carbon emissions. And the photovoltaic production obviously is generating electricity. So all of the things in that letter are exactly what we have been working on using. In fact, we're working with a nonprofit research institute that the utility companies fund to make sure that we're using sort of the cutting-edge things like the second generation of electric heat pumps and heat pump water heaters and heat pump clothes dryers. So yes, it's currently an all-electric design.
Okay. One concern with that, just on the side. How are these residents going to be able to cook their tortillas? You need a gas stove, an oven, to cook your tortillas. Just little feedback.
You use a comal.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved for one. Sanchez, no.
With that, we'll go to item 30, which is adoption of a resolution approving a loan agreement with the US EPA for the infrastructure finance and innovation with the loan for the Water Utility Department.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, before the presentation starts, I wanted to note that there is an error in the resolution that we need to correct for the record. So on page two, line 25, there is a reference to a dollar sign and a parenthetical including, I'm sorry, excluding interest. So we need to insert the word 71 million there. And we'll make that correction, assuming this item passed. And we'll make that correction, assuming this item passes
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. City Councilmembers, Cary Dale, Water Utilities Director, presenting on item 30, which is approval of a loan agreement for the Water Infrastructure, Finance, and Innovation Act, otherwise known as WFIIA. Presenting with me this evening will be Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director. We also have Brian Forbath of Stradling, Yoka, Carlson, and Roth in the audience, as well as Scott Smith of CSG Advisors available on the phone if there are questions. Staff is recommending that City Council adopt a resolution approving the loan agreement with the U.S. EPA for the WFIIA loan to the Water Utility in an amount of $71 million, which includes $69 million in loan proceeds and $1 million in capitalized interest payments. Staff also recommends approval of a term sheet with the EPA, approve an associated WFIIA note payable to the U.S. EPA, and authorize the city manager or designate to execute all the related documents. This has been a project that has taken over a year's worth of staff and consultant times to get to this point, started in April of 2019 when EPA issued their notice of funding availability. In response to that availability notice, staff submitted two letters of interest, one for water projects and one for sewer projects. After those were submitted, EPA went through a review process and scored the letters of interest that were received from agencies across the United States. EPA announced that it would fund 38 of those projects, including both of the projects that were submitted from the city of Oceanside. This past December, council authorized staff to submit both applications for the water and for the sewer utility. Staff submitted a water application shortly after that action in January of 2020. After that was submitted, EPA staff evaluated the application, and the city and EPA entered into a negotiation period in the springtime of 2020. During that negotiation, EPA identified that there were additional project elements that could be included in the scope of the financing, which included portions of the upper recycled water project. EPA requires that two rating opinion letters from nationally recognized statistical rating agencies are provided in a period very close to the time that the loan is executed. The ratings needed to indicate that the senior obligations of the project have the potential to achieve an investment-grade rating. And the final rating letters must be public ratings and should specifically evaluate the WFIIA loan's default risk and contemplate the full life of the WFIIA credit instrument. In response to this requirement, staff and the finance team presented to S&amp;P Global Ratings, as well as Fitch Ratings in June of 2020, and received very strong ratings, double-A plus and stable and double-A stable from the two rating agencies. And at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation
Here we go. All right, we're back on the saddle. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm here to present the financial information related to the WFIIA loan. So the interest rate on the loan is no less than the yield on the U.S. Treasury securities of a similar maturity to that of a WFIIA credit assistance at the time the loan is finalized. A lot of words. This rate is currently, as of, well, as of August 17th, was 1.19%. That is the reason that this is a wonderful instrument for us to not only go after, but go into. The final rate will be determined once the loan closes in mid-September. We're planning around the 16th to close, so that's just around the corner. Repayment begins after substantial completion. So that's a big deal because of this whole, the clock doesn't start until it's finished. So we have that time where we're not going to. So there's some rules that WFIIA requires through the EPA. It must be repaid using a dedicated source of repayment, a security pledge that is the same in all material respects as a security pledge to the city's water revenue bond. So they looked at both to make sure we're consistent and able to repay with that dedicated. Dedicated revenues include rate revenues, so that's from people paying their water and power bills, water bills. Other revenues pledged for the purpose of repaying debt service. Repayment is allowed for this. Not that we would at 1.19 unless we had that much cash, very inexpensive funding source. And the WFIIA debt service factored into the financial model and will, and is reflected in the water rates for January 2020, which has already passed, and what's coming up in January 2021. Fiscal impact to the Water Utilities provide, this will provide at least 69.1 million of funding for three of the big water projects. It requires 51% funding from other sources, so they'll only pay up to 49%. But we've already put that in place. We have the 2020 Water Revenue Bonds, which have already been approved. Grants, we have several in process right now, and there are sufficient fund reserves. Interest rate, again, is the good faith estimate at this time is 1.19%. Payments, based on the debt schedule, range from $2.5 million to $2.6 million per year. Recommendation: Staff recommends City Council adopt a resolution approving the loan agreement with U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act loan to the Water Utility in an amount up to $71 million. Approve a term sheet with the EPA related thereto. Approve an associated WFIIA note payable to U.S. EPA and authorize the city manager or designate to execute the related documents. Any questions were available, as well as Scott Smith, our financial advisor, and Brian Forbath. Thank you.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any public?
No public.
This did go down to 1.19 from 2.29. And the staff report actually is recommending approval to not exceed 2.7% should something change by the time, between the time that we act tonight and then it actually takes place?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, these water projects are things we've been working on and dreaming about and going to make us independent to certain extent of reliance on the Water Authority and Metropolitan Water District. I'm amazed that it went down from what I thought was a good rate, the 2.29, down to the 1.19. I certainly hope it stabilizes there and/or goes down lower, although I don't, can't imagine it actually going down any lower than that. But yeah, I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt the resolution approving the loan agreement. And I do hope that nothing happens to that 1.19. Thank you. Thank you, staff, working so hard on this. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. I had asked Cary earlier about the 1.19. Did you get an answer to that?
Deputy Mayor Feller, Honorable Councilmembers, I believe Scott Smith is on the line and was prepared to answer that question.
Is he there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
If the question is where the rate is today, is that the question?
Yes.
Yeah, so the rate, you know, it's bouncing around. It's a function of the U.S. Treasury rates relative to the average life of this particular loan, which is approximately 20 years. Today, the rate is 1.22%, so it's slightly higher than the 1.19, but it's, you know, it's been a semi-volatile, but extremely low interest rate environment day-to-day in the course of the last few weeks.
Well, I'm going to second the motion, and let's hurry up.
We have a motion and a second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
And I apologize, I skipped over 29, so we'll go back to that one, which is adoption of a resolution authorizing Affordable Market Home Buyer Assistance Pilot Program.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Megan Crooks, interim director with the Neighborhood Services Department. This evening, I'm presenting to you the Affordable Home Buyer Assistance Pilot Program. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing an Affordable Market Home Buyer Assistance Pilot Program as an affordable housing program under Oceanside City Code, Chapter 14, Sea Inclusionary Housing. Some of the background, the city does operate a Cal Home, first-time homebuyer program. Since 1998, we have issued 453 loans over that length of time. The target market for that program is the 70% to 80% area median income households. And there is a cap of $56,000 per loan. We have had a reduction in loan applications over the last two to three years. We have still issued some loans, but at the target market and the small size of the loan, it still doesn't allow for somebody in the very low to low-income range to achieve the affordability of purchasing a home. On January 22nd, City Council provided direction for staff to consider a presentation on an Affordable Home Buyer Program and to come back with staff's recommendations and analysis. And that presentation at that time, two highlights, was that it was a target market of up to 115% of the area median income, which would go up to moderate-income households. And also, but it's every income up to that. And the cap would be 20% of a purchase price. Or at the highest maximum purchase price of $600,000 in the program would be equate to $120,000 of a max loan. On August 12th, staff presented this program to the Housing Commission, and they did provide a recommendation that City Council approve and adopt the resolution to authorize this program under the Inclusionary Fund. And they also recommended that a 3% interest rate accrual for monthly interest-only payments be included in the program. I'm going to give you an overview of the program requirements and the terms of the program that staff is presenting. And I'm going to do them as a comparison to what was presented on January 22nd. Both programs for the homebuyer qualifications recommend that the income limit go up to 115% area median income. Both programs also require an eight-hour education course and that the home be a principal residence of the borrower. Differences in the recommendations, the proposal before was Oceanside residency of 12 months or an Oceanside employment of six months. Staff is recommending that it's a liver work in Oceanside for the last three years. The applicant contribution is 1% to 20% of the purchase price. The proposal from January 22nd included an exception for seniors selling a mobile home that might be utilizing those proceeds to purchase the new home. Staff didn't recommend having any exceptions in the contribution cap. The first-time homebuyer program would have to have no ownership interest in the last three years. The proposal from January 22nd included an exception for veterans, for seniors 65-plus or for seniors and 55-plus that were mobile homeowners. For the eligible properties in the terms, both programs require the property to be within the Oceanside City boundaries. And both programs say one-unit properties only. And those properties can consist of single-family detached homes or they can consist of condominiums, townhomes, or townhomes. Differences in the eligibility of properties, the January 22nd proposal required tenant occupancy properties would be ineligible. Staff agrees with that, but we did expand it a little bit to be aligned with our Cal Home program. And that would be that they must be owner-occupied, vacant, or occupied by the borrower. So sometimes the borrower might be the renter if they have the opportunity to purchase it. That type of tenant situation would be okay. Other tenant occupied would be ineligible. In other words, we do not want to put somebody out of housing in order for this program to go forward. The January 22nd item, the property is subject to inspection by the city. Staff agrees. However, we would be doing that in coordination with First Trust Deed Lender that we would be working with. The January 22nd item also had an item for approved short sales pays foreclosed in REO properties and regular sales. And staff just remained silent on that item in the terms. For underwriting criteria, both programs recommend that the combined debt-to-income ratio can be up to, it should be no greater than 45%. And the Mortgage Credit Certificate program should be applied for if the applicants are eligible. Other underwriting criteria that staff added to be aligned also, again, with our Cal Home program, and these are just terms that we would follow. A list, we would create a list of pre-approved First Trust deed lenders, and that would remain an open list. They can do a request for qualifications at any time, and we could approve them and put them on the list. The First Trust deed lenders would be the ones qualifying the applicants. So this wouldn't be a program that staff are taking on to do all of that work. The loan-to-value ratio would be less than or equal to 100% of the total sales price. That would include all costs going in. And that the credit history applicable to low or moderate-income persons, first-time homebuyers, available market programs would be assessed. So making sure that that's applicable to that type of program. The loan terms for both programs are requiring that the loan be up to 20% of the purchase price, but there are purchase limits, and both programs set purchase limits at $600,000 for a single-family detached, and $450,000 for condominiums, townhomes, or twin homes. Those are the maximums. It doesn't mean that somebody's going to necessarily go out for a purchase at that price. And that the loan would be deferred, a 30-year term, and there would be no forgiveness of the loan. Loan terms that differ in the two programs, staff recommended that the loan amount must ensure affordable monthly mortgage payments. That's going to be called out, and the January 22 item stated the repayment is due on sale, title, transfer, first mortgage repayment, or 30 years. Staff added a few items in there, repayment would be due on sale, title, transfer, if the property became not owner-occupied at any time, or loan maturity, or repayment or refinance of the first mortgage. The January 22 item had a shared appreciation of 25% component, part of the terms, and staff did not include that for the reason that we wanted, we didn't want to create a situation where somebody was reluctant to pay off the city loan, and thought that perhaps that might be a deterrent for that. The refinance of first mortgage is allowed under certain conditions, and staff did not include that. It's a general practice that we can subordinate to other terms. They may want to refinance to lower their interest rate or something, and that's a standard practice that we do with our Cal Home loans. In addition to all of this, the Housing Commission recommended that 3% interest accrual with monthly interest-only payments be included. The discussion on that was staff would like to create a motivation for them to, while we want to assist them in being a first-time homebuyer, we want to motivate them to also pay off the loan, so we can recirculate the loan, recirculate funds, and help another family next in line. So the Housing Commission felt that that would help instigate that. With that, the recommendation is that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the Affordable Market Home Buyer Assistance Pilot Program as an affordable housing program under Oceanside City Code, Chapter 14(c), Inclusionary Housing. And the pilot would be for three, up to three loans, depending on the loan amount. Staff recommends that, so one, we can get through COVID and see that the housing market remains where it is today. We did confirm over the summer that it is still looking okay, and confirmed that there is a market for this loan program in the city of Oceanside with our current housing market. And the other is that we can do an assessment of how the pilot program goes, and also report back to the council, along with several other of our housing activities that are going on, our key proposals that come in, and our inclusionary housing policy updates. So we'd be able to have a more thorough analysis of everything at that time. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any public?
No public.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you so much to staff for your hours of putting this together. I think at the heart of this council agenda item, that collectively, the dais agreed that we need to diversify the opportunities for Oceanside residents. And I think the most important element about this policy is that we are making modifications to our Chapter 14(c), which the ultimate goal of Chapter 14(c) is the utilization of in-lu fees paid from developers. How can we create more affordable housing in our city? How can we be creative? How can we help local families? And as I said earlier on a previous item, building affordable units is extremely expensive, and it takes a long time. And we're moving in a pathway as a city to create an environment where it's going to be a lot easier and a lot more, it's going to make a lot more sense for development community to build a lot of affordable units when we create that environment, but we're not there yet. And so how can we help as many families as possible with these in-lu fees to attain homeownership, to attain affordable housing? The generation before us here in Oceanside, you talk to a handful of 35, 40-year-olds, they're still renting. They're paying rent, and their rental payment is a lot higher than what the mortgage payment would be within this program. And so the idea behind modifying Chapter 14(c) is to create instant opportunity for Oceanside residents that make below 115% of the median income. So these aren't wealthy individuals. These are hard-working families here in Oceanside that could benefit from this program. And they're not just going to be throwing rent away, they're going to be obtaining home ownership. What a testimony that, you know, these families will have to say, you know, the city of Oceanside, they didn't use tax dollars like other programs. They used development in-lu fees to create affordable housing through purchase. So I am so, so excited about this program. I appreciate staff's efforts on looking at it as a pilot program, but I don't believe we're reinventing the wheel at all. I think that, you know, we have extensive experience over the years with the other down payment assistance, but because it's funded by federal dollars, we have restrictions. This program, we have the flexibility as a city to set the rules and to help as many Oceanside residents as possible. So I really appreciate that. I think the heart behind this item is to take a family that's paying $25,000, $3,500 a month on rent, they can never afford a home. Why? Because they don't have a down payment. They don't have a down payment. That's the number-one killer for homeownership. They don't have a down payment. So we can take these developer in-lu fees, apply that 20% down. So you're taking a $500,000 house, and now you're lowering the cost of that house through a silent second that sits on title. So now they're actually, the cost to them is $400,000 because of the down payment. So now they're making payments based on a $400,000 house, which is way more affordable, way more affordable, less than what they'd be paying in rent. They're building equity on a monthly basis, and they have the opportunity, when the time comes, to sell, pay back the city. We can recycle those funds to help another family. And so I, again, I'm really excited. There is a couple items that I want to bring up that, you know, I understand this is a pilot program. And so the first item is, and again, I want this to pass, so I don't want to, like, go crazy on this. Let's just get it through, and then we can build off of it. Number one is the loan-to-value to be 100% or less. My only concern with that language is for potentially a VA borrower that is still active duty, which means they, or they don't have a service-connected disability, they have to pay a VA funding fee to the VA. And if they don't bring it as cash, then nine out of 10 times, they finance it into the loan. So you have a purchase price of $500,000, you have a VA funding fee that is financed, it breaks that threshold of 100% loan-to-value. So I would like language in there to allow, based on staff's discretion, to allow government funding fees to be financed. They can break that 100%. So that would be a modification that I would like to request. Number two, I think this is super important, and it kind of piggybacks on the Housing Commission. I appreciate the heart of the Housing Commission in saying, hey, you know, let's charge an interest rate, and that will put pressure on them to sell or to do something, you know. I disagree with that, because these are individuals that they don't have a down payment, and their debt-to-income ratios and their median income is at a threshold where homeownership will make sense, but if we start charging them a line item additional payment per month, that is going to greatly affect their debt-to-income ratio and their qualifications. And so I think we're going to, we're going to be shooting ourselves in the foot by trying to collect the 3%. I think what's healthy and what's appropriate is what LA County has been doing for, you know, decades now with their down payment program, which ours is unique in that we're using developer in-lu fees, they're using taxpayer dollars. And that's the appreciation share to where, you know, they buy for 500, they sell three, four, five years from now, they sell for 600. We get a small portion of that that comes back to the pot to help more families. It's being recycled, we're helping more families. I'm keen to maybe reduce that if 25% seems too much. Maybe we can do 15%. But I think it's essential that we continue to pay that forward, and we create more opportunity for Oceanside residents. I think that this program will expand, and so that's why I'm really wanting this to go through. So I'm willing to be flexible and work with my colleagues to just get this through. But I think that the shared appreciation has been so successful in LA County that it's something we definitely want to incorporate, so that we can grow this fund and help as many families as possible. Last but not least, $360,000, that's, I mean, that's not enough to really have a viable case study. Three purchases, maybe four. You know, we have close to $8 million in our, in our fee, it's just sitting there. This is, the whole heart of this, and I know my time's almost up, is to create affordable housing. And we have the ability to create affordable housing, and the testimonies from these families that are going to buy and use this program, we need to at least help 10 families for this to be a true pilot program, a true case study, to be able to say, okay, let's see what we did good, let's see what we did bad, and let's keep doing it, and let's make it better. And so I would like this to be an up to 1 million. And, you know, if we need to have some brake pedals in there to say, hey, before you get past 500, come back to council, whatever, but three is not enough. It's not even gonna, it's, it'll be, all the energy and effort that we've put into this is not. This is going to be huge for our city, and I believe our region, to have unique opportunities like this in the Oceanside, to be able to usher this in. And we need at least a million to make this work. And we have the funds there. And again, what is the goal of 14(c)? Create affordable housing opportunities. And that's exactly what this is going to be doing. So I made some requests on changes, and I'll let my colleagues speak.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I appreciate that this is a pilot program, especially since we are talking about in-lu fees that we're going to be using for our homeless. You know, we all talked about addressing the fact that we need to build shelters, and it's going to cost us. So I actually would like to keep with staff's recommendation of up to three, and/or to that amount, and see how it goes, and see what, you know, what staff has recommended. I don't mind the other two things that has been suggested by Councilmember Rodriguez, but I would like to come back after that amount and then see how it's going, and also see the progress that we're making in terms of the shelters and other projects that may be coming up, because this is the lower, of all the priorities, it was the lower end of the priorities, it was homeownership, right, because of the 5,000, the eight-year waiting period to even get into housing. And I mean, you know, affordable housing, and that's with the vouchers and everything. So this is above and beyond, you know, being able to pay rent. We're talking about having 5,000 individuals who can't pay rent. So I think we talked about that a bit, that that is our priorities, our homeless situation, which we all acknowledge was undercounted. It's going to require time, it's going to require significant time, it's going to require significant investment. So I would like, I want to, I would like to support staff's recommendation with a couple of changes having to do with, I forget what they were, but I think the thing that I worry about is ensuring that we can, we can actually accomplish our priorities, because this is, as I said, this was on the lower priority end. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
The Housing Commission recommendation about 3%, I disagree with that as well. This is, I don't, and I believe you were talking about the loan shared appreciation. Was that the 25%? Yeah. So that second item, I think staff's recommendation is right, no shared appreciation component on that. The, this offer is a deferred loan terms that, there's no monthly payment. It's a loan that they get when they sell, and is repaid when they sell the house. So I think it's an exceptional opportunity for the people that are renting. I just, I just think it's a great opportunity. We only had two that applied for that project out on, I can't remember the street, but it's out on Emerald, and it's way out in the corner of the city, and they built two homes for these, for people to purchase through the same type of things. And there were only two, and there were 20, 30 people that applied for it at the time. So I'd be willing to, because it is a pilot program, I think I'd like to see how it works, but I'd, I'd give $500,000, but not, not a million yet. I think we need to find out if there's people that are actually willing to do this before we push for that much money. So that's, that's my input on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Kime.
I'm just a little concerned. We're all over the map on our housing strategies. Just a couple items ago, we did 100% to homeless, and then now we're using those same fees to do this, and trying to raise those fees. So I, that's why I voted no earlier, because I think this is a good program, but we just set everything to homeless, and then now we're doing this. So I would like, I mean, I think these are, you know, the very low-income and low-income households need to be helped with programs like this. But I'd like to see it all in one affordable housing strategy, like before, that was wider, and we could accomplish all of those things. That's why I didn't want that narrow focus just on homeless, when, you know, I know this is coming up in a couple items. So I think, you know, instead of shooting out 15 different ideas, we can have a comprehensive plan and put something like this. This could be, I think this has a potential to be a great program, but right now, I'm not going to support it, because it's just, it feels patched together with, you know, the homeless strategy we just made the motion for. So at this point, I'm not going to support it, but I can picture it as part of a comprehensive plan that it would be a good program.
I'm going to make a few comments here. I'm supportive of the program as well, and I think there's different ideas floating around, different things. My recommendation, and I'm going to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation, and I'm not necessarily opposed to what Councilmember Rodriguez brought up. I think that the VA issue is a valid issue, and I'm willing to stay at the lower number for right now. But what I'd like to see is, once you advertise the program, if there are requests and applications for more, then I would like for that to come back, so we can raise that limit, because I'm not married to the 300. I'd be okay if it's 500 or, if there's a demand for it, I think we should supply that demand. But at least to get the program started, and to see what type of applications we get in, I'm going to make a motion to approve staff recommendation and allow you the flexibility. And if there's a demand for it, bring it back as soon as you can, so we can raise those limits.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I appreciate that. I agree. So.
Apologize. This sheet says shared appreciation. It says no shared, staff's recommendation is no shared appreciation.
Correct. And we're modifying it to have a shared appreciation element as a part of the program. We're just lowering it from 25 to 15. So it's less.
So ultimately, some point down the line, it would put money back into the same pot to do this again?
Well, you're, you're putting, you're, you're, you're going to put the down payment back in the pot.
Right, at some point.
Correct. So if they buy for 500, they sell for 6. When they pay it back, the 100,000, they're gonna pay 100 plus 15 grand of the 100 grand they just made.
I understand.
So we're growing it so that we can help more families is the goal. You're, you're paying it forward. And so 25 maybe is too much, but let's lower it so we have something we're growing to recycle back and help more families. And it's not just a net nothing.
But if you're having other building going on, you're already building the inclusionary housing fees.
Correct. So this is an opportunity to uniquely grow it to help more families.
I just see it as
It's a partnership.
We're a partner in it and we should make some money out of it at some point.
Correct. It's a partnership.
Anyway, Deputy Mayor Feller?
No, nevermind.
Your light was on. Nope. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yeah, I'm gonna support the motion, but I don't, I don't mean I'm ready to say ignore this until I see what they're speaking with the homeless. Because even the um
Councilmember Sanchez, your mic is off.
I'm gonna go ahead and support this for now, but I'm going to want to see what's happening with everything else. I think Councilmember Kime brought up a good point, which is what I was trying to say, is that, listen, we can't just be looking at individual things because our priority, and what we all said, was our homeless. And what we, what we've been saying that, this is a regional goal to shelter our, unsheltered. And it's gonna cost. So in the in lieu fees, at least for the infrastructure, and then also if there are opportunities for affordable housing, which is what we desperately need to do as well, because that is a requirement. This does, you know, this does not build new units. Does this satisfy RENA at all?
Yeah, I don't know, Megan, if you know the answer to that?
I don't, Councilmember Sanchez and City Council, I don't believe this satisfies RENA as units. I mean, we can report it that we're doing something.
And that's my concern, is that we're not gonna be getting credit for this at all. And we need to satisfy our RENA requirements. I mean, that is, that is a state mandate. So I would like to, excuse me.
That's not correct.
Excuse me, sir, I'm speaking right now, okay? I would like to make sure that we are still on track with addressing our RENA requirements. And, and, and maybe, you know, have this, a little bit of, this is kinda subsidizes or adds to our already, our, our, the existing program that we have. But I really feel like we need to be building affordable units to be able to do that. So, and $8 million is nothing, you know? So I'm very concerned about doing program, 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 and then being so far away from being able to accomplish what we need to do in the next, next, just the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would just like to say, if, if this provides even three to five units for workforce housing people, people are out there who are struggling to get by, then it's, it's well worth it. Because I think it's that affordability across all income levels that we're struggling with. So to me, I'm willing to advance this program, see how it works and expect that if, if, if there's a need to change things, that staff is flexible enough to bring it back to us as soon as they can, so we can make adjustments as needed. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I have like 30 seconds. So just a correction on Councilmember Sanchez's statement about meeting RENA numbers. The state doesn't require the city to build anything. The state requires us to zone to build, because the private sector builds.
Point of order, that is incorrect.
So we have zero requirement to build.
That is incorrect. The new requirement from the state is that we actually build. And if you've been listening.
Thank you.
That is what is going to cause us to lose our discretion.
This isn't a discussion about RENA at this point.
Incorrect.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved 401. And just real quickly, Deputy Mayor Feller handed me a public comment on item agenda number 28 and 29. This was sent to council and did not follow the process of being sent to the city clerk's office, but we will make this comment available online and we will contact the member of the public to discuss the proper process.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to 31, which is a contract for more of the pure water.
with the Water Utilities Department, here tonight to discuss item number 31, Pure Water Oceanside Injection Wells Contract Award. Tonight, staff recommends that City Council award a contract in an amount not to exceed $3,670,068 to NorCal Pump and Well Drilling of Yuba City. Authorize the city engineer to execute change orders up to a total of 10% of the original contract value. Approve Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement with Parsons in an amount of $51,225 for labor compliance related to the WFIya funding previously approved. Approve Amendment Number Three to the Professional Services Agreement with Woodard and Kern in an amount of $17,502 to complete the permitting and compliance process for the project. And appropriate 3.4 million from the water revenue bond proceeds into the project account. And finally authorize the city manager or designate to execute the contracts and agreements. As we've discussed previously, Pure Water Oceanside consists of five construction contracts. Tonight's item is Project Phase 2C for the injection wells. The image in front of you tonight shows a red and white circles. There's three of them at the lower half of the image, and those identify the three injection wells proposed for tonight's item. The other items include the conveyance piping, the purification facility, as well as monitoring wells. A little background, from 2005 to 2015 to 2017, staff completed multiple studies identifying water reuse projects for the city. In 2018, we began the design of Pure Water Oceanside. And at the end of 2018, Planning Commission adopted the MND and MMRP and approved a conditional use permit for Pure Water Oceanside. To date, since the end of 2019, three construction contracts have been awarded by council. Tonight, we are looking at Item 2C, which was advertised for bid on June 26, 2020, and had the public bid opening on July 9, 2020. Staff has completed a pretty extensive outreach program that we're, we're continuing through the Pure Water Program implementation. And recently, we were awarded the 2020 California Association of Public Information Officers Excellence in Public Information and Communications Award for the outreach program that we are implementing. On July 9, we did have a bid opening with the engineer's estimate of 1.5 million. The one bid we did receive was for $3,670,068. I do want to point out that there were, there was a pre-bid meeting held, a mandatory pre-bid meeting held prior to the bid opening, a couple weeks before, where there were a total of seven contractors that had attended that meeting. Six of those contractors declined to submit a bid. Because of the discrepancy between the engineer's estimate and the bid that was received, staff took on the endeavor of evaluating not only the bid that was received in detail, but also reached out to the contractors that declined to bid to find out why they did not bid. The two main reasons that those contractors did not bid, one was for their, their schedule availability. They either had projects still beginning or still hadn't been completed or will be beginning within the timeframe that our project is needing to be constructed. The second and probably main reason was the site constraints. Our project is being constructed within the city right-of-way and within the roadway. So staff has pretty restrictively set the footprint of the contractor so that they're not impeding within the public access of that area. Multiple contractors had stated that they were unable to fit their drill rigs and fit within that site constraint. Upon evaluating the, the bid that we did receive, we did see that any bid items related to the site requirements had about an 81% higher bid dollar value than what we were estimating, which again, further identifies that those site requirements and that constricted sites footprint was probably a vast majority of that higher bid item. We looked at comparable bids that have gone on throughout California for other drilling projects for public agencies. The bid that we'd received was 3.5 times higher than those comparable bids of similar depth as well as diameter of wells. The main reason, again, we identify that those bids were lower in cost was all of those were constructed in open space areas, whereas again, ours is in the city right-of-way. And finally, the, the final item that could be related to the higher costs is, due to the WFIya funding, we are required to meet the American iron and steel requirements, which require any iron and steel products used on that project to be American-made or 51% American-made, which do have increased cost to projects. The comparable projects that we looked at did not have those American iron and steel requirements. So one of the options we looked at was if we modified the contract, rejected, recommended rejecting a bid and rebid this project. We did identify that there could be a potential savings on this current phase bid of about 10% of what we're seeing. However, that is not guaranteed. And historically, from projects that have been rebid in, in the past, typically the, the new bid numbers come in right around where the original one did, because these numbers are now advertised in public and other contractors are seeing what bids were submitted. We, if we did do this, this would require us modifying the completion schedule for this phase of work, which would result in existing contract delays. So again, we have already awarded three other construction contracts that are all tying these projects together. And this could have schedule impacts to those contracts, as well as cost implications to the city to pay those scheduled delays to those other contractors. Additionally, this could cause us to potentially miss the SB 606 deadline to have the entire Pure Water project online and operational by January 1, 2022. This would require us, require the city to implement additional water conservation efforts if those, that deadline is missed. And the final item we did look at was if we were to rebid it, we would have to loosen the site restrictions. This could, would require us to potentially close part of the road or the entire road on Paula and/or restrict resident access to their homes and their neighborhoods. When looking at the recommendation to award, one thing I did want to point out was, this is a smaller portion of the entire Pure Water Program as a whole. The additional cost and overage from what was budgeted is approximately 2.3% of the overall Pure Water Program. So while the, the bid did come in higher than what we anticipated, it is a small portion of what the overall budget of this program is. If we do award, there will be no schedule impacts that are the responsibility of the city, and additionally, in turn, without no cost impacts that are the responsibility of the city, and still allows us to move forward and meet that SB 606 deadline. If that, if this contract is awarded tonight, a notice to proceed would be issued on September 23, and the contractor would mobilize in October of 2020. The contract completion date is 102, 102 working days, which is approximately February 20th, 2021. And that would give the other contractors approximately a year to complete their portions of work and get the purification facility online and operational. The cost breakdown for tonight, all the items included is approximately $4.1 million, and that does include the contingency value that you would be authorizing the city engineer to execute change orders. The appropriation request is for $3.4 million tonight. I do want to point out that only 1.8 million of that is the overage related to the contract, the higher bid on that contract. The other dollar values were budgeted, however, they were going to be appropriated through the normal annual budget process. So we're just asking for that to be appropriated earlier than the, the June or July budget appropriation. The funding sources for Pure Water include our grants, our WFIya loan you saw earlier, as well as the water revenue bonds. And with that, staff recommends that City Council award the contract and authorize the other five items on, in front of you tonight.
Mr. Navarro, are we on public?
No, public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. And I want to thank staff for taking me through all this, because I did have a lot of questions. And I appreciated that I, I was able to, to ask all those questions and, and not feel like they were not appropriate kind of questions, because they were, you know, maybe sounded too elementary or something. So I really appreciate it, especially the explanation with respect to the, you know, the, the engineer's estimate and the difference, and what would happen if, for example, we were to, to rebid in any way extend this project and how it would severely impact this, this process. And also, thank you very much for informing me and talking about the, while this is a small part of the project, it is a very specialized skill, which is not available locally. Perhaps over time, when more cities are going into this, this, you know, pure water, then maybe those will, will filter back, filter into the San Diego County region. But for now, we're out in front and so we're, we're kinda leading on some of this. So I, I really appreciate all that. This is a very, very critical stage in this project and we do need, you do, you do need a decision here. And I feel that you've answered every single question I've had, you've, and then some. And, you know, I feel that staff has really looked at this in every which way. So I'm gonna go ahead and move staff's recommendation forward.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I'm gonna second that. And just for the sake of time, I just want to say that it was a little bit alarming to see the, the increased amount of the bid, but I think staff has done everything they can to look at every option from every direction, above and beyond my comprehension of, of how this works. And I'm, I'm really satisfied with, you know, staff's efforts. And I'm looking forward to getting this done on time. Thank you.
I'll be supporting this as well. I would just ask staff to look at some of those site restrictions, if you can loosen them, which would then expedite the schedule, but also result in some cost savings. I would suggest you at least evaluate those. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Residents have to get home, though.
Motion approved 5-0.
Leave and come home.
Mr. Navarro, item 34?
Number 34, the city clerk's office received five comments and run requests, and all of them wish to be read into the record. Our first comment is from Ken Layton. Ken Layton, speaking only for myself, "We've all heard those comparisons about how Carlsbad is superior. But one true example of how Carlsbad embarrasses us is the Peewaddle Group of wannabes who operate as the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. The Carlsbad Chamber is a hugely effective group with real impact on Carlsbad's thriving, cutting-edge business climate. They regularly host seminars and smart networking activities that keep Carlsbad's economy humming and its members engaged with the and its members engage with the cutting-edge development that keeps Carlsbad businesses' profile expanding upward and outward. Meanwhile, you don't even have to have a business to be on the board of our podunk excuse for a chamber. It's a place to park social wannabe who needs to belong to a group that throws low-wattage sundowners. In the meantime, Oceanside props up our chamber with free rent. The Carlsbad Chamber, that has many times the budget of Oceanside's chamber, doesn't need a civic handout to keep it afloat. The hapless Oceanside Chamber would undoubtedly fold if it wasn't propped up by this free rent handout. And now, the Oceanside Chamber, which has little to do with Oceanside's commerce or economy, is getting politically active, propping up candidates who they think will keep their gravy train coming. The Oceanside Chamber is a weak and flimsy, low-tech, social group whose CEO can be counted on to speak at council meetings in support of developments that the citizens do not want. Whether it be NRF or the prison hotel on Oceanside Boulevard, everyone knows Oceanside Chamber will endorse your hideous, high-rise, boxy project as long as you give them contributions. An Oceanside Chamber endorsement means you will vote to continue its free rent handout so this pathetic, low-energy social group can keep afloat." Ken Layton. Our next comment is from Carolyn Kramer. "Good evening, Oceanside voters. Hope everyone is staying safe out there in the community during these very challenging times. This election is very crucial to our city and what's left of it. These four councilmen, Weiss, Feller, Rodriguez, and Keim, have sold our city and our neighborhoods out to developers. We need to change that in this election and vote them out. They made our beachfront and downtown look like a Los Angeles metropolis, and our neighborhoods are overrun by vacation rentals. Vote them out. And now, most recently, the Five Kingsmen voted to give away what's left of our town. Vote them out. They voted to change the zoning from agricultural to residential to accommodate a developer. They approved a housing project of 585 houses on agricultural land. They voted to support a developer instead of the community. The citizens of this city rallied to get a referendum on the ballot to overturn their vote. Now it is our turn to vote Oceanside. What do you want, Oceanside? Do you want to save what's left of Oceanside? It's our turn now. Vote no on Measure L. Vote to keep sprawl housing projects off of agricultural land. Vote to save what's left of Oceanside. If you don't like what they have done to our beachfront and downtown, then please vote no on L. Thank you, Carolyn Kramer, Oceanside resident." Our next comment is from Kathy Carbone. "My name is Katherine Carbone, and I'm the founder and treasurer of Save Our Farmland Political Action Committee opposing North River Farms. I've written to you before, and some of you might recognize my name as one of the persons in interest that was sued by a frivolous slap lawsuit supported by integral communities captioned as Haslett v. Navarro. As I'm sure you are aware, we just prevailed a few weeks ago, and the judge left it to no uncertain terms that there was zero evidence of wrongdoing in the signature gathering process. It's disgusting that the reach this developer now has in Oceanside extends beyond the money he's pumping into the campaigns of those of you who wrongly support him to victimizing innocent community activists such as myself by filing lawsuits to harass and intimidate us. I felt from the beginning of this issue, starting with SOR, that as a Fallbrook resident living eight miles from the North River sprawl site, and as a person who was evacuated during the Lilac Fire in 2017, that I was in a unique position to provide you with useful insight into the detrimental and far-reaching dangers of this proposed project. I was naive at first to believe that you'd listen to me. I wanted to be read into the record that despite being sued by this developer, I remain committed to opposing this project, which will not only negatively affect Oceanside, but also negatively affect Bonzel and Fallbrook. Every single day, I wake up and think about what I can do to promote those Oceanside candidates who are currently running for office, who have spoken out against the North River sprawl project. Every single day, I think about what specifically I can do to continue to protect the environment and safeguard our community. I want you all to know that if you were told that this lawsuit would make me go away, you are definitely lied to. I'm still here, and I'm still fighting. They want me to be quiet, I'll be loud. They want me to stop campaigning, I'll wrap it up 10 times 10. They want me to go away, I'll be right in everyone's face, front and center." And that is two minutes, and the rest of the comments will be made available online. The next comment is from Arlene Hammerschmidt. "In vindication of all 125 referendum signature gatherers who are accused of forgery in this chamber by appointed Mayor Weiss, the press release from our attorneys. Judge rules in favor of referendum proponents in Oceanside. In a hearing today, Judge Gregory Pollock of the San Diego Superior Court ruled that a referendum repealing the approval of the North River Farms development project is valid and will be placed on the ballot for the people of Oceanside to vote on. The lawsuit filed in January by the attorney who represents North River Farms alleged that the individuals who gathered signatures for the referendum petition engaged in fraud and forgery and requested the court remove the measure from the ballot. It is also alleged that there was a defect in the form of the referendum petition. The lawsuit was filed against referendum proponents, including two individuals who had worked hard on the referendum, let Oceanside vote, and Save Our Farmland, in addition to the city clerk and the registrar of voters. Shortly after the lawsuit was filed, the referendum proponents filed a special motion to strike, claiming this case was a slap suit. A meritless suit filed primarily to chill the defendant's exercise of First Amendment rights. The judge agreed, and today granted the referendum proponents motion in full. During the hearing, the judge noted that he saw no evidence of any forgery or fraud. Judge Pollock himself conducted an in-camera review to examine the actual referendum petition packets that were submitted to the city clerk and certified by the registrar of voters. This case presents the exact sort of abusive process the legislature sought to correct when it enacted the anti-slap statute, namely, 'A large development company wielding litigation is a weapon in order to silence and deter individuals from exercising their constitutional rights,' said Everett Delano, the attorney representing the referendum proponents. The court got it absolutely right in its ruling today, and community members should feel vindicated. The motivation behind this lawsuit was clear: to intimidate..." And that is two minutes, and the rest of the comments will be made available online. Our next comment comes from Kathleen Lipit. "Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to offer some information regarding potential impacts of commercial marijuana businesses from other cities in the county and beyond, and what Oceanside might expect in the future. I hope Oceanside will consider these issues in moving forward with to accommodate commercial marijuana businesses. The safety and success and quality of life for your children, families, and existing community-friendly businesses need to be protected from the harms and negative impacts they face from commercial marijuana businesses. Marijuana operators tend to push the envelope of city regulations they once promised to follow when initially permitted. Complaints from residents about issues like odor, safety, and quality of life were making the neighborhoods less livable for families and existing community-friendly businesses. Marijuana lawyers and land use consultants will comb through city regulations, looking for weaknesses, and in language to exploit their benefit. Some cities have found that their local control authority over marijuana businesses has been undermined and sometimes lost in the fine print of marijuana contract legalese provided by marijuana consulting firms. The city of San Diego determined marijuana businesses needed further scrutiny and oversight, and recently created a new cannabis permitting bureau with nine full-time staff to step up enforcement of city regulations at a cost of nearly $1 million a year. In Temecula, just yesterday, the Riverside Sheriff's Department responded to a marijuana growing operation where they found six individuals shot to death, and a seventh who later died in a hospital. The sheriff spokesperson opined that marijuana is not a victimless crime. Marijuana businesses, both legal and illegal, employ armed security to protect their product. I hope you will pledge transparency, take aggressive action against bad actors, and move forward with very cautiously when permitting your marijuana businesses. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Kathleen Lipit, public health practitioner and public policy advocate Coastal Communities Drug-Free Coalition." Our next public comment is from Victor Roy.
Victor Roy, Rancho San Luis Rey here in Oceanside. Hello, Oceanside. Eureka. I know we're in Oceanside, but eureka. To all my fellow Californians, as a native son of California, I am now honored to recognize today, September 9, 2020, as a very special day for all native sons and daughters of California. 170 years ago, in 1850, on this very day, California became the 31st state in the United States. Additionally, at that time, per the terms of the federal compromise of 1850, California was admitted as a free state. The California Gold Rush was happening, and thus, our California state motto became "Eureka! I have found it." So happy 170th anniversary on this California admission day. I'm now announcing a special 9/11 event that's coming this Friday at Melba Bishop Park and Recreation Center. It's called the 2020 9/11 Second Annual Cup Stack Tribute. Will not only honor and remember the families and innocent victims of the worst terrorist attack in the United States history, but participants will also have the opportunity to stack for those past or present they wish to honor and acknowledge. Stackers may stack for one or up to three individuals and receive a special ticket to spin the Wheel of Golden Spokes for each individual listed. The Wheel will feature prizes such as school and educational items, gift cards, toy sports items, and one spin per ticket, you may, just one more moment here, free pizza, DJ music, raffles, and more. Note, due to COVID-19 pandemic, safety guidelines will be observed, please wear masks, social distancing. Beginners are welcome. The event is free to participate and free to learn, and for more details, contact the city's Park and Recreation Department, or Dwayne at 760, that's Dwayne Godinay, 458-2614. And again, Melba Bishop Recreation Center is located at 5306 North River Road. The event will be this Friday, September 11, from 4 to 8 p.m. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment. Thank you. Mr. Feller, you had a general council member item?
It's just a brief, kind of a sad note. Father, son, and wife were on a football trip to Arizona, and on the way back, the father, Tony Dunn, was killed in a head-on crash, and his son, who was a football player at El Camino, was, he broke his back, and so they're not really sure to what extent that is affecting him. They flew them all back to La Jolla. It was out in the desert east of Palm Springs, so. I would just like to close the meeting tonight in honor of Tony Dunn. He was a fierce fighter for the youth and the young people that El Camino yell in from the stands like crazy every game, so I know that's a terrible loss for the family and for the football family over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin, 35?
Thank you. Item 35 is the adoption of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside creating a tobacco, I'm sorry, creating a program to regulate and license tobacco retailers within the city of Oceanside.
Motion to approve it. We have a motion and a second. Motion approved, 5-0. 36?
Item 36 is the adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Chapter 14(c) of the Oceanside City Code regarding inclusionary housing by the addition of subsection 14(c.5b) and the amendment of subsections 14(c.4) and 14(c.6) subdivision b.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion approved, 5-0. And with that, we will be adjourning to 3:30 on Wednesday, September 23, and if you would please join me in a moment of silence for the Dunn family. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.